Open this study session of the Historic Preservation Commission at six thirty-one. We're talking about City Ditch project, so we'll turn it over to Steph for the presentation.
Yeah, thanks, everyone. So we'll be talking about City Ditch and kind of the little bit of the history context, and then kind of the current kind of project and everything that's going on. If you guys want to go out and introduce yourselves, and then we'll get going.
I'm Ryan Gerroth, I'm Deputy Director in the Public Works Department of the city.
I'm Stephanie Ellis, I'm an engineer with Inglewood Utilities, and I'm the Project Manager for the City Ditch Piping Project.
Hi, and I'm Brent Soderland, I'm the Director of Public Works for the City of Littleton.
Hi, everyone, I'm Sarah Stone, I'm Deputy Director for Business Solutions and Engineering for Utilities in Inglewood.
And so kind of setting up a little bit of structure, so I'll give kind of that brief history and context, and then we'll talk about the project. If you have questions or kind of clarifying about the material in the immediate sense, feel free to ask them. If it's more on the kind of next steps, all that kind of fun stuff, let's wait to the end, because we're kind of wanting to get the information out to kind of lay that groundwork, and then have that discussion. So, cool, we'll go to get started. Great, great, so kind of history, so getting started. So City Ditch is one of the first irrigation canals in the state, not city, the state, and it's about a twenty-six mile long canal. It was started by the Capital Hydraulic Company, began in eighteen sixty-one. Due to Civil War, some of the funding was a big piece of this, funding was kind of stalled, so the project stalled. One other thing too is that it was actually started in a slightly different location. And so when construction restarted, it was in eighteen sixty-four and then completed in eighteen sixty-seven. And this is actually the ditch with the, not this one, sorry, courthouse, and then the ditch. So, kind of connecting it a little bit more than just its location to Littleton. Richard Little, founder of the city, is who surveyed, and then also kind of managed the construction for the ditch. And kind of through that resurveying is where they found that the original start of the ditch was not effective, and it was actually, the original start was closer to what is kind of current day downtown Littleton. Kind of broadly speaking, having the irrigation allowed for a lot of development to happen in the region. And kind of Denver and everything kind of grow as much as it did. One of the pieces, you could see is Little, Richard Little actually opened the Rough and Ready Mill, which kind of brought a lot of folks kind of down to Littleton, kind of started that ability to kind of grow agriculture as well as a big part of Littleton's history. And so Little opened the mill utilizing that piece, the kind of abandoned piece of the ditch, and then also founded and kind of platted the City of Littleton as well. So founded it about eighteen seventy-one, incorporated in eighteen ninety. And so this is actually included, it was in one of the attachments, but is also in this whole booklet. It is a map of kind of Littleton and kind of highlights how City Ditch ran kind of through the city. You'll see kind of the location for the Rough and Ready Mill, and so kind of that was that original kind of start piece for it. Getting a little bit more specific, so Slaughterhouse Gulch, there is a flume within Slaughterhouse Gulch, which is in Slaughterhouse Gulch Park, which is just north of Powers Avenue. And North School, kind of the end of Crestline there where it curves. And so a flume is a structure to kind of bridge water across other features, like a gulch, just kind of a ravine. And they would have originally been constructed from wood, likely just easier to come by that material and be able to utilize it. And so the current structure that's there was likely built in about the nineteen forties. It is a steel structure, and does kind of currently exist in its original spot. So when looking at kind of from a preservation kind of perspective, the historic significance, which I know we talk a lot about historic significance and historic integrity kind of in preservation terms, it has a fair amount of significance from kind of that development pattern kind of component, with Littleton specifically being connected with Richard Little. It is a structure that still exists and kind of functions today. And then from an integrity piece, it hasn't been altered really a ton, it's kind of in that same original location. The flume itself was built in nineteen forties, which was, so it's not as old as it, but as the rest of it. But due to its age and kind of use, it kind of has also gained that significance. It's just kind of would be noted as like the second structure for the gulch and flume. Any questions about kind of the history piece before we move on? Great, awesome, so, super brief. And let me get it set up for the next one.
I guess Brent, did you want to do an intro?
Oh, yeah. Sorry, so I guess what we're gonna do is we're, is Inglewood's gonna kind of give a history of the City Ditch and their project, and then Ryan will go over some of the operating and maintenance stuff that we looked at as what it would cost to keep the flume, and I guess also what it would cost, I guess, to just leave it in place. So I guess with that, are you up first, Stephanie?
Yes. Okay, so I know we just discussed that City Ditch is over a hundred and fifty years old, and it was built to provide water to the Denver metro area. Inglewood owns, operates, and maintains the City Ditch between Chatfield Reservoir and Harvard Gulch Park in Denver. It doesn't extend quite all the way as far as it used to back in the day. The T-Rex project and a number of things have chopped it up over the years. It's Inglewood's primary raw water conveyance system that's used to take water from Chatfield Reservoir to the Allen Water Treatment Plant in Inglewood. And we also use it to deliver water to other users in Littleton, Inglewood, and Denver, including the City of Littleton. Through this project, our goal is to have a fully piped system between Chatfield Reservoir and the Allen Water Treatment Plant. City Ditch is currently a mix of open channel and pipe sections all the way between Chatfield and Harvard Gulch Park in Denver. There are four stretches that we're piping through this project. Reach one is in the City of Littleton, and it's southwest of Santa Fe and Mineral. And that area, most of City Ditch has already been piped by a developer and relocated through that area, and remaining work is gonna be completed by an Inglewood contractor in the next few months. Reach two of City Ditch runs through Lee Gulch Park area, and it's not the focus of today's discussion. We're currently working on redesigning where the pipeline will go through Reach two. Reach three is through Slaughterhouse Gulch Park and the Littleton Maintenance Facility, and that's, that is going to be the focus of our discussion today. And Reach four is in the City of Inglewood Bellevue Park area. There are numerous benefits to this project. The main benefit is the improvement to our source water quality and the protection of our source water. When we're able to take our water directly from Chatfield Reservoir, it's a much better raw water quality that we're bringing to our water treatment plant than when we're pulling water off the South Pot River at our Union Avenue Pump Station. In addition, through this project, we are removing several stormwater inlets to City Ditch that are currently conveying stormwater in, which is generally not good to have coming into your drinking water treatment plant. It's a little more difficult to treat. And through this project, our plan is to, or it will help protect City Ditch from other sources of contamination, such as a train derailment. And City Ditch through a lot of this area actually runs very closely to the BNSF Railroad, and so it will help protect our source water. From a sustainability perspective, this project is important because the City Ditch is a gravity flow system, so it doesn't require any pumping. And when we take water from the South Pot River, we do have to pump that up, so it will greatly reduce our energy usage. And because that water quality is much better coming into our water treatment plant, we can reduce our chemical usage as well. From a resiliency perspective, piping City Ditch will make this a low-maintenance system. Right now, it's pretty high maintenance. Also, from a resiliency perspective, this will, this project will allow us to operate the City Ditch year-round. Right now, that can sometimes be challenging to do in the winter. From a safety perspective, this project by piping City Ditch, it will limit public access to it, which will help protect the public and help protect the drinking water from potential contamination. And overall, we believe this project will reduce other capital investments that we may need to make for the utility, because we'll be able to take more of that better raw water to our water treatment plant. So potentially, we might not need to put in a softening unit or other measures to help improve our water quality, or taste odor, taste odor and hardness. This project has been in the works for a number of years. I will take you through the timeline here. In twenty twelve, Littleton and Inglewood executed an IGA that established Inglewood's plan to pipe the City Ditch one day. In twenty twenty, this project was included in our Water Master Plan, and it was a recommended project. We kicked it off in October of twenty twenty-two with our Phase One preliminary design. And in April and May of twenty twenty-three, we held our first public meetings in Littleton and in Inglewood. In June of twenty twenty-three, we began our Phase Two final design. And in November of twenty twenty-three, we held several stakeholder meetings, one of them with the Littleton and Inglewood Historic Groups, and then another with members of the public who will be impacted by the construction. In January and February of twenty twenty-four, we held additional meetings with individual property owners who wanted a meeting, a more one-on-one style meeting to discuss the project. And in March of twenty twenty-four, we presented on the project to Littleton City Council. This past fall, we finalized the design for Reaches Three and Four. And this February, we put out an RFP to bring a contractor onboard for the work for Reaches Three and Four Construction. This spring, we've been working on finalizing our easements and permits with Inglewood, or Inglewood, Littleton, and BNSF. And this month and next, we're taking to our city council and to Littleton City Council several easements and agreements that will be discussed in a little bit for this project in order to kick off construction this summer. And we're planning on completing construction in twenty twenty-six. The maps shown here show the planned pipeline location for the City Ditch. The thicker blue line is where that pipeline is proposed to be. The thinner red line is existing piped areas of the City Ditch, and the thinner blue lines are existing open channel of the City Ditch. So as you can see, so Reach Three is what's in the City of Littleton and our focus of today. And we tried to straight-line that pipe so that we would leave the opportunity to leave some of the existing City Ditch in place. Reach Four is also shown here, and again, that's in the City of Inglewood Bellevue Park area. Throughout this project, we've had quite a bit of stakeholder engagement. We created an Inglewood Engage website page specifically for this project, where we have information on the project, and we also post updates as we have them available. We've held several public meetings over the last few years, and at those public meetings, we've collected comments and feedback from the public. We've evaluated that feedback and tried to determine if and where we could put it into our project and incorporate it into our design, and wherever possible, we did incorporate that feedback. And some of that was shown as we didn't put the pipe completely in the existing City Ditch, as we received feedback from a lot of folks that they wanted some of the existing City Ditch preserved for historical purposes. We've worked closely with the City of Littleton throughout this entire project. We've also held several meetings with the Littleton and Inglewood Historic Preservation Groups. We've presented to the South Pot Working Group on the project, and we've also met with adjacent property owners. We developed a project fact sheet, and we're currently working on developing a what-to-expect-during-construction fact sheet that we'll be able to hand out to folks as construction gets closer. We set up a specific email inbox for the City Ditch Piping Project, where we've communicated with the public, and people can reach out to us with questions and things like that. And we've also presented to Littleton City Council. Looking ahead, we're working towards getting approval from Littleton and Inglewood for the easements and agreements that we'll be discussing here shortly. We also plan to send out additional stakeholder communications prior to construction, which we plan to begin this summer. As I mentioned, we're also working on redesigning our Reach Two City Ditch Pipeline. Once that redesign is complete, we'll work through a similar process of easements and agreements with the City of Littleton and move forward with construction for that reach. And I'll pass it over to you.
All right, thanks, Stephanie. All right, so the next set of slides here are gonna provide an overview of the information that we provided to council thus far. At the two study sessions, it went to the one back in April twenty-second, I think it was, and then May twenty-seventh. So the first set of slides are kind of cover the flume assessment that we had a consultant do for us. So as part of the feedback process that Stephanie had mentioned, Historic Littleton Inc. provided some feedback that they wanted to potentially try to preserve portions of the ditch or the flume, and/or the flume. And so the City of Littleton took it upon ourselves to get a consultant onboard to do an assessment of the structural condition of the flume in Slaughterhouse Gulch and the one in Lee Gulch, in the Lee Gulch area as well. Focus tonight, though, on the Slaughterhouse Gulch Park area. So some of the pictures you see here on the screen are a snapshot of some of the conditions of the existing flume structure. So the picture on the top left shows some of the rust and corrosion on the bottom side of the flume. That's from years of water running through it, as you can imagine, rust starts to develop. The picture you see in the top center there is the anchor bolt on one of the abutments on the end of the flume. The one thing I wanted to point out is that that hole you see in the metal steel there on where the tape measure is, there is supposed to be a bolt right there to hold that steel in place, but that concrete has broken away, and so the anchor bolt's actually missing. And then the other picture on the bottom right, now Inglewood has addressed this situation, but the, this is one of the footing piers for the structure itself down in Slaughterhouse Gulch. So over time, the water of the gulch washed away the dirt around the concrete. And so when that picture was taken, there was only about ten percent of that concrete in contact with the ground. Like I mentioned, the city of Inglewood, though, took our assessment and has addressed that specific issue with some recent work. These are the costs that came out of the assessment that the consultant did for us. These are the same numbers we shared with council back on April twenty-second. So there is, there was actually three options that we really had them take a look at. One of them was removal, which is that, the first option you see in the first row right there, removal with the Inglewood project, so that would be no cost to the City of Littleton, and it would be covered by the Inglewood project. Option two is repairing and maintaining the flume in place. And one thing I want to point out with that option that's in the consultant report is that the work that was called out for that six hundred and forty thousand dollars over ten years was to get the flume back into full working order, so water flowing through it, not leaking, structurally sound, all those kinds of things. The option two A that you see right there is a number that we have added to the presentation tonight. It was up, we followed up with our consultant to get basically the base level cost, do nothing else to it, to the flume structure, other than to stabilize it. So fix that anchor bolt that was missing the concrete around it, and then also some of the other structural components with the corrosion and the bent metal pieces that are currently in the flume. And so that option two A is about a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars over a ten-year window. Option three, all of those, one thing that we wanted to get a full picture of is if we take it down and move it somewhere else. And so three A through, 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 through three D show you the various elements of moving it. So three A is just removing one of the spans, three B is one of the trusses, three C is the truss with three spans, so it's a very short section of it. And then three D is remove the whole thing to somewhere else, whether that's somewhere in Slaughterhouse Gulch Park, or at the Littleton Museum, or whatever it might be. As I see the costs for option three from A to D, just keep going up. The more of it you move, the higher the cost is. And so with that in mind, some of the considerations we presented to council is that the costs to repair to be fully functional, like I said, in option two, two A, I guess I should say, and maintain in place are high. So it would cost a lot, that's about a three hundred thousand dollar cost that I had showed you. The second bullet there talks about the limited grant funding that might be available to stabilize and restore. So that would be through the Colorado Historic Preservation Society, or something like that, the State Board.
History Colorado, the State Historical Fund grant is likely a.
So it is a possible grant option for restoration or stabilization. There are some concerns around safety with regard to the structural stability of it long-term. And there's also the ongoing restoration costs if left in place. The one other safety concern that we do have is, once there's no water in it, and they, each of the ends are very accessible from the ground level. So kids or other people could walk up the berm and into the flume structure. So there is some risk there with keeping it in place with people accessing the area. So that's the other safety aspect that we want people to be aware of, was to stay in place. That fourth bullet there, so the cost to relocate the flumes are even higher. Like those option three that I showed you, there's quite a bit of cost associated with relocating it to somewhere else. And then the last bullet, any relocated structure would need to be secured for safety as well, depending on where it would be moved to. That would be, it would need to be secured in that location as well. I mean, ultimately, on the April twenty-second meeting, the council gave us authorization based on the information we provided to remove it with the Inglewood project. With the idea, though, that we would come to a group like this to be able to continue the conversation and get feedback from other people as well before we execute anything on the project itself. So moving into what we presented at the May twenty-seventh meeting, and so this is the project agreements. Someone is gonna give you a quick overview of the four agreements that we have with the City of Inglewood on the project. So the first one is the Intergovernmental Agreement. And basically, this agreement is, yeah, it outlines there on the, on the right, it's in the Slaughterhouse Gulch area. It's effective only during the construction project with Inglewood. There's a tree mitigation fee, and so the City of Littleton has a tree fee, so that if a developer or someone else removes a tree, there's an in lieu cost, basically. And so since the alignment of the new pipe is gonna cut across Slaughterhouse Gulch Park, where there are some trees like cottonwoods and other various trees, there's a tree fee that Inglewood will pay Littleton in the amount of two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars roughly. Or it's also calls, stable, calls out for stabilization of the ditch bank. And so the yellow in the picture in the bottom left are the areas of the ditch that are gonna be abandoned. Like you can see, the, the non-yellow section is where the flume is. But the graphic above to the left, that shows you what the stabilization will look like. So basically, a little bit of fill in the ditch to be able to stabilize that slope along those, along the bus property for the Littleton Public Schools, and also the private property to the north and east of the ditch. The reason we're asking for stabilization, which would also include seeding, so grass, so it'd be natural looking. But the purpose of our, the reason why we're asking for that, especially on the private properties, the ditch bank is starting to collapse in on itself, and so fences for private property would potentially fall into the ditch. And so we're trying to make sure that, once there's no water flowing in it, that the ditch itself, or at least the bank up, it won't collapse and bring down someone's fence with it. So that's the idea of doing a stabilization, so it doesn't fully fill in the ditch, but it partially, it basically stabilizes the bank. And then the last bullet, and this is the one that, where the council had given us authorization initially that, as part of the IGA, was to preserve a section of the flume. So as Inglewood was, would be removing it, it would cut out a section of it, and then we would remove, remove the remaining structure. So the section of the flume that would be taken out with that removal will then be put somewhere for the, with, with the intent of preserving or commemorating the ditch. There's lots of different ways you can potentially commemorate the ditch with that, with that one piece. The next agreement is a temporary construction easement. And so this is basically, just gives Inglewood access to the area during the construction project. So the diagram you see on the left, that hatched-out area is the area of Slaughterhouse Gulch Park, where Inglewood would have permission, or Inglewood or the contractor would have permission during construction to have access to construct the pipe, or to place the pipe, I should say. It also grants permission for staging, so having equipment in the area and other materials. It has insurance requirements for what Inglewood or the contractor needs to have with regard to liability insurance for being in the area. And it also has surface restoration requirements, which basically says that whatever is disturbed with the digging and placement of the pipe, Inglewood would restore that surface back to what it looks like currently. So new vegetation, all that kind of stuff. All right, the permanent easement, and so this is a more narrow band. Again, you can see on the graphic on the left there, there's a hatched, a skinnier hatched-out area. And basically, what this agreement does is it relinquishes the old easement along the existing ditch. It establishes the new easement along the new pipe alignment. It limits the abandoned ditch restoration. So basically, whatever was called out in the IGA, so the bank stabilization, this agreement says beyond that, nothing else will be done to restore or stabilize the ditch itself that's been abandoned. It designates allowed activities for Inglewood and Littleton within the easement area. So in the case of a stormwater pipe that the City of Littleton may have that runs under or around the, the new pipe alignment for City Ditch, our crews would have permission to go in there and do maintenance work on it without needing to do, without getting additional permission from Inglewood. And the last bullet there, so it specifies restoration requirements in the new easement area. So if Inglewood comes in to do maintenance on the new pipe alignment, it specifies what Inglewood will and won't to associate with restoration. it specifies what Inglewood will and won't to associate with restoration of the area. All right, the last agreement is a quitclaim deed. And basically, what this does is it records the easement relinquishment from the previous agreement. It also releases Inglewood of all responsibilities of the area shown in purple on the graphic to the left. And relinquishes those responsibilities to the city of Littleton. So whatever ditch structure or flume structure remains within the purple area becomes the city of Littleton's responsibility to own and maintain once the quitclaim deed is filed with the county. All right, some upcoming milestones, and so Stephanie mentioned this. So July 15th is currently the schedule for the agreement resolutions to go back to the city council. We've been having some conversations about whether or not we would take all four agreements to that meeting, or if we would, based on, you know, input from others, potentially take the ones that would need to be done to get construction going and maybe take the others later. But as of right now, the intent originally had been to take all four of them on July 15th. Stephanie mentioned this as well, so summer of '25, construction is going to be starting on the project. And then in late fall, early winter, is when the flume structure itself would likely be removed, and then a piece of it would be preserved. And that is obviously dependent on the construction schedule. But the point of that is that there is some time before the flume actually would need to be removed with the Inglewood project, since the Inglewood project is going to be taking some time before they would be in that area to take the flume down itself. All right, and then the last slide here, so Sarah and I guess are kind of tag teaming this one. So this is the options for commemoration or preservation. I guess maybe I'll let you talk on the whole one.
Yeah, so in terms of kind of preservation, looking at it of kind of a few levels from kind of like best practice, this is a kind of the highest kind of approach of preservation, which would be to keep the ditch kind of in place, keep the structure in place, and kind of have it as kind of a historic site. Be able to interpret it, still have it, it's within a park, still have it be kind of this public feature, way to kind of commemorate, celebrate our history. And that's whether it's just kind of preserved so that it's there and it's stable and it's able to be seen, or if it was fully in working order, it's kind of 2A, 2B, or 1A, 1B kind of thing in terms of that. But in terms of kind of like recommendation and kind of best practice, that would be, is, I think as you saw from a lot of the historic Littleton Inc. materials, the recommendation from a kind of staff preservation planning hat, also the recommendation, would be to try to keep as much of that in place as possible, be able to interpret it and use it as a feature for the city. The kind of middle option would be to leave a portion of the structure and the flume kind of in place, but taking down some of it in terms of, and that's really kind of relating to maybe issues of cost, long-term costs, any safety concerns, et cetera. Kind of that middle approach of saying, we're still getting to kind of keep it and see it in place, but it's not quite as much as what was there. And then kind of the last option is this kind of commemoration. So keeping a piece, being able to either put it at the museum, keeping it on site somehow, and kind of interpreting it, but you're losing kind of that, seeing it where it was, seeing its connection with the ditch, et cetera. So it's definitely a, better than completely scraping all of it and kind of losing that piece completely. But it is definitely kind of the bottom of the like recommendation scale and kind of in how we would look at that kind of preservation piece. And as I mentioned, it does likely meet the kind of historic significance for kind of our local criteria and integrity. Part of the grant that was mentioned, the state historical fund, level of designation doesn't need to be done, local designation is allowed. State or national designation could be difficult because of how, and it would be something that I can research further, I just don't know the answer exactly, which is generally with these waterways types of kind of projects, you have to get every owner along the way. So they're really hard at that scale to designate from a local component. So that does keep that funding option available. And I don't know with the kind of changing and easements, et cetera, how that would work, but I can do that research. But just kind of those would be the options, so the state historical fund is a potential, but would probably only really apply probably for that first tier. So it's kind of thinking about that as well. I don't know if we can kind of go from there.
Yeah, yeah, I guess the last three bullets there, so those are kind of tied to the current direction and authorization that we've been given from the city council based on the two presentations that we've done. If option three that Sarah was just talking about is what we do proceed forward with, the questions around where we would commemorate the piece of the flume that would be saved with the Inglewood project, you know, how to commemorate that and how to make it done in a way that's respectful to the history of, of the, of the structure itself and the ditch and those that built it. And the idea being that there'd be a lot of coordination between Historic Littleton Incorporated, Historic Preservation Commission, and city staff to make sure that, you know, we land on the right solution that is a good balance between all of the potential options that could be considered. So I think with that, we're open for questions and discussion.
And one way that we, and just to make sure that we're taking as much information to councils, we're able to, we can kind of talk about the preservation versus commemoration, but let's also still talk about some of these kind of final two questions as though commemoration is going forward. Just so that we can give the kind of like, here's the absolute recommendation, here is like based on the current authorization and kind of path thoughts. So it's just, it's both pieces of the discussion. We want to have all of it, so I just wanted to kind of, we can kind of look at it that way, I just don't want to lose those pieces. Yeah, any kind of questions, initial thoughts, not even questions?
So we would, through this project, before, so the flume wouldn't be removed until the new city ditch pipeline is constructed. And we would be putting in a reverse siphon, so essentially, we're going to actually be going under Slaughterhouse Gulch. The pipe would go underneath it.
Goes underneath it, so there's no need to this over.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, you can see, so yeah, right here on the screen, so you can see, so the purple section is a part of the ditch that's being abandoned. And the flume is part of that purple area that's highlighted. That permanent easement that you see pointed out on the screen there, that is where the alignment of the ditch is going to go. So it's going to be more of a straight line across Slaughterhouse Gulch. And as Stephanie was just saying, the pipe is going to go underneath the gulch. Right.
I don't know if you've been out there, but you can actually walk underneath the flume?
Isn't the most historically accurate and least expensive option to simply leave it in place, cut off the end so kids can't walk out onto it?
Yes, so there are some structural issues with areas away from the abutments. So some, there is, there is corrosion. Like that one picture I had, it had to show the underside of it. So some of the steel corrosion is that, is in the metal spans. And so there is still some structural stabilization that would need to occur to make sure that it remains in place.
But not nearly as much as trying to restore the whole thing.
No, so you're right, that there would be less cost of, and especially if we're just looking to stabilize it, and if we cut off the end so people can access it, can't access it, that also would take care of that anchor bolt that's missing on the one end of the pier, from the, of the abutment.
And was that option 2A?
So option two, so yeah, option 2A actually covers stabilizing the entire thing in place. So that would also include fixing that anchor bolt that was missing. So the cost to do what you're talking about, where you cut off the ends, is probably less than the $153,000.
I am curious too, I mean, these metal flumes have been in place since the 40s. Are there any known safety incidents? Like is, is there anything that's happened that makes you think that if something might happen again, could we let it in place?
I don't know, we haven't done research on the history, to see if there's been documented safety.
Yeah, we're not aware of any specific incidents, but, but, you know, that doesn't.
I mean, you can't predict the future, of course, but.
A lot of years ago, but.
Do you think that the fact that there would not be water going through would change the?
No, I feel like kids would knew there was a water slide with the water.
Well, they definitely did. There are two people here who have done that.
They're not going to play in it when it's dry.
I can see, I can see kids walking into it, like if you were just walking down the ditch, I could see them walking into the, into the structure.
Sure, yeah.
I can see that happening.
Is, is maintaining a portion of the now dry ditch considered part of this? I know that's not what we're specifically talking about, but the ditch itself is the more historic thing. That's a pretty cool thing to think of that engineering from 150 years ago.
Is there a stabilization that he was talking about?
So yeah, the bank stabilization, yes. So that's the only thing we would do to the ditch itself, is just to stabilize that bank. But otherwise, the intent would be to leave it as it is.
Yes, from the historic application, would be dry ditch on both sides of it and the flume in between, so it all makes sense to somebody looking at it in 50 years.
Also, there is a portion of the ditch that is on the National Historic Register, right?
Outside of the city of Littleton, I believe.
Yeah, Washington Park up in Denver is a piece that is on the register. I don't know if it's still running.
It is, there's, I think there's water that goes through it.
I don't think it's utilized for.
I don't think it's so real. Inglewood only owns the city ditch until Harvard Gulch Park in Denver.
Okay.
I believe that part of the ditch might actually, or some other portion, I don't know if it's that exact area, but I know some portions of the city ditch I think are used for like reused water. I think Denver Water might use portions for that, I don't know if that's what that section is, but.
Okay. I'm just, I'm more just saying like as far, like, we could look into locally designating it, but it does, I mean, it has been done in other parts of the ditch before, so I don't think it's impossible.
No, and it's not, and that is definitely something I'd want to research too, because this, with it not being part of, like utilized as water running through it may not be an issue. Also, I can, I want to say it was 10, 15 years ago at least, if not more, that it was designated?
The 80s.
The 80s. So there's also a very good chance that the requirements around getting that on the National Register are more strict.
Sure.
Because of how things get affected on either end of these types of things. So it could be that that it was done a lot easier then.
It just seems like this is more significant because it's older, you know? And it's up further on the ditch.
Yeah, I think there's definitely, I mean, a case to be able to put something together to get it designated, absolutely, I think there's.
Yeah, and, and the first irrigation off of the south flat, right?
Mm-hmm. I just, if we don't designate this, I'm just curious what is worth designating, you know?
And I would say, starting with the kind of local designation, I mean, city owns land, so it's a little bit different than I've kind of privately owned. But that is where you have a little bit more control, it's also a little bit faster of a process. So if we were wanting to do grant money, that's definitely the first, I think, would be a first step before the National Register. Again, the kind of regulation piece of it is a little bit easier to deal with since it would be city-owned. That's not as big of a, kind of, the benefit isn't versus the two.
National designation or local designation?
I mean, local designation first, but I mean, ideally, national.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm just thinking local designation.
And the, the time that we have to do this, you know?
Exactly, right.
Here, stick in.
We don't own, we don't own any of it right now, correct?
We own, you guys might be a bunch better than me.
Yeah, we don't own it, right?
Right, we don't own any of the city ditch, we haven't, how long has Inglewood owned it? For decades, right?
So shouldn't Inglewood be responsible for repairing it?
Well, that was the mayor's question, that's a very good question, and the mayor raised that, that it's almost an abandonment by neglect situation where that flume is in the crappy shape it's in because Inglewood has not maintained it. You've almost made the case to pipe it because your infrastructure doesn't exist. There's no point in arguing that for now, but I'm just reinforcing that the mayor asked the same question. You know, why wasn't it maintained all these years? So we don't own anything right now, we can't designate any of this right now.
Not until that.
So, so this intergovernmental agreement kicks in, we suddenly own the dog link, correct?
After the quitclaim is filed, so once the quit.
When all that's done, we own the dog link.
Yes.
So.
And anything that's within it too, so the ditch, and if the flume is still there, we own, we own the flume structure as well.
And at some point, will the Lee Gulch flume go through a similar process? I know we're focused on Slaughterhouse, but a similar thing is going to happen on the Lee Gulch. So at some point in the future, we're going to own the two flumes and a portion of the ditch that's no longer in use.
Yes.
So when we talk about designation, that's all we're talking about, is these abandoned pieces.
Right.
Part ditch, part, part ditch, part flume. I think that's really important to point out. And one of your estimates, you talked about maintaining it and it being functional, the flume.
Yes.
It isn't functional after the piping's done, what, what did you mean by functional?
Yeah, so there's been, I think, so any of you that know Larry Borger, so there is Larry Borger.
Yeah, the report.
Yep, and so he had suggested the idea of pumping water from the realigned city ditch pipe and circulating it through the ditch and the flume structure. That cost right there does not.
And then back into Inglewood's feet?
No, it would just be a, it would be a, it's, it's like a fountain, it's apparently happening right now at Hudson Gardens.
Exactly, right, so that, that's, what was it, $640,000. That gets it backed into shape to be functional. Now, the one thing that cost does not account for is the pumps that we would need and the ongoing maintenance with pumps and the pipes and the other stuff we would need to install. So that's probably a multimillion dollar project to do that.
So.
Water right piece of it too.
I'll, I'll just say, it feels like we're being brought in at not even the 11th hour, it's like 11:45 in terms of all of this happening. And Historic Littleton Gale and Richard have been engaged in conversations about this since '21, so four years. So I just wonder, like, has anyone made any concessions from a historical preservation standpoint in response to what Gale and Richard have been talking to you all, not us, but you all, for the past four years? Any concessions?
Well, so I'll say, and I think I mentioned it when I presented, the, we looked at several alternatives for the pipeline alignment, but because we received feedback of wanting to preserve as much of the existing ditch as possible, that's one of the reasons we straightlined the pipe through the park, was to be able to leave those sections, because.
The neglected sections.
And it's, and a shorter pipe.
Yeah, I wouldn't say they're neglected, I mean, we use it for water supply now. Once we got the report from Littleton that they did on their own, we, we corrected sections that, that needed to be, that maintenance was done.
And we've maintained the ditch and flumes in order to continue operating, to convey water to the treatment plant, which is, that's the amount of maintenance that we've needed to continue to operate it.
I guess one thing I would add to that too, so it's not a life cycle for a structure. It's typically about 75 to 100 years. And so this metal structure is 85 years old. And so the life cycle of a bridge structure like this, it's near the end of its life. And so it would, it would be something that if the ditch was staying in its current alignment, the flume structure would have to be replaced.
And I'll just add to that, going back to the timeline, the IGA between Littleton and Inglewood that was signed in 2012, had that in mind, the, the life cycle of that structure, the, the other one in Lee Gulch. And so it was just a matter of timing and project, managing a project and executing a project in order to do that. So this was thought about in 2012, and it's just taken some time to get to this point.
And then, last question, how did we get to this commemorating idea? Because as, as you point out, that's not what historic preservation is really about. If you're really going to be purist, I could tell, and just, you know, how you described it, that's, that's not what we do. We don't take a piece, put it in a museum, that's not historic preservation at all. So what do you guys know about how we got to this, again, 11:45, before this is done? Oh, we're going to commemorate it by making a piece, did the council make that recommendation? With staff input, or it's not really formal in any way in terms of?
I can take that question, so it's based off of the condition assessment that we did. And the, and finding that the structure, like I said, is near the end of its, of its typical useful life. It's, it's at the end of that life cycle.
But commemorating is a historic preservation act, not a, not a act of, of maintaining a, a structure, right?
Right, so the.
Getting into the realm of his, his. Getting into the realm of his, history, Littleton's history, preservation.
Yeah.
By going into commemorating, so how did that come?
So the physical structure is, is not in good shape. The concern is that safety wise, it's not gonna be able to remain in place for an extended period of time without it being a safety issue. And so the idea of commemorating a piece of it is to save a portion of it, whether, like I said, that's at the Littleton Museum or somewhere within the park as a piece of artwork, artwork or wherever it might be, given the existing condition of the structure.
So you started with the premise, this thing is not worth saving. Why don't we keep a section to commemorate? That's what I'm hearing you say.
So we didn't start with that. That's why we did the condition assessment.
After the condition assessment, you were like, this isn't worth saving. But that was from a more functional operational standpoint, not from a historic preservation.
So I guess I will just add a little context to that. So City Council did ask us to come to the HPC and present this to you and consider options, right? So, um, when we presented what it was gonna cost to keep it in place, right? At that, that's the information that City Council had, so. If this group has other recommendations, we would bring those forward for City Council to consider, right? Cuz we, we also didn't have the stabilize in place option at that time.
So, so council has not considered that?
They have not seen option two A, yeah.
They have, so Rick Cronenberg did send a summary to them via email, and that number is actually in the email that council has received. So they have seen that, they have seen that number, um, they haven't seen it during a presentation at a study session.
And that's in that kind of little handout number, lack of bar on it.
Yep.
So Inglewood took possession of the city ditch in.
Seventies.
The nineteen seventies. And what is the financial benefit that this provides to Inglewood because you outsource the water to other cities?
So it's, the, the main benefit of city ditch is that we use it as our primary water source.
Yeah, you also said that you outsource it to other cities, so I'm asking what the financial benefit is for that.
It's not significant. So the only, no, the water in, so the, we own the ditch structure itself. The water is actually owned by, other than our own water, the rest of the water is actually owned by Denver Water. And there's a number of, they're called contract users, um, along the ditch. They have a contract with Denver Water for that water. The only thing that we receive in payment from those contract users is just, uh, the amount of operation and maintenance costs um proportional to the amount of water that everybody takes. So we actually pay majority of the operational maintenance costs cuz we use the most water, and then those other users just pay for that.
Yeah, yeah, I get that. Um, and then what has been like your average maintenance cost per year for these specific locations thus far?
I would have to look that up. I don't know off the top of my head. Um, it's, it varies depending on the year. Cuz there's, um, it includes things like staff time, but if there's larger maintenance projects, for example, the flume in Slaughterhouse Gulch, we actually lined, um, I believe it is in twenty twenty-two, we lined that flume, um, because it was leaking. So we lined that flume, that was the larger cost, for example, compared to like the previous year, we didn't have that cost, so. But we could get those numbers and I think provide them. I just don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, and then out of the two flumes that we're discussing, is there one that's in better condition than the other?
So based on, so we actually, we're just focused on the Slaughterhouse Gulch flume tonight, cuz the design project, well, actually, we could potentially come back to you in the future, once they have the design done for the Lee Gulch area. Uh, but between, so we did do an assessment for both flume structures though. And I would say, based on the, the structural assessment that was done, the Lee Gulch flume is in better condition than Slaughterhouse Gulch. The cost to repair it in Lee Gulch is much less than what it is in Slaughterhouse Gulch.
I think you've got some interesting facts because we're gonna have to talk about it, and if we're talking about dollars to dollars, preserving one that's in better condition seems way easier.
Well, and with that too, we could just stabilize it in place and buy a little bit more time. You know, like there's not, like Inglewood is gonna go forward with the project, but do we necessarily have to make a decision now? Or could we stabilize, I mean, obviously, we have to make a decision to spend money to stabilize it, but do we have to make a decision to take it down now?
Uh, so the, the only risk or downside to not having it removed with the Inglewood project is then that becomes the city of Littleton's cost to remove it in the future. So if we, we can do that, we just need to be recognizing that we will be taking on that cost in the future to potentially remove it if that's what we decide to do after Inglewood's project is gone.
So, just to clarify, the Lily Gulch is in better condition, but you don't have an extensive study and cost analysis like you do of Slaughterhouse?
We actually do, we have a very similar assessment done for the Lee Gulch, for the flumes in the Lee Gulch area.
Okay.
We're just talking about Slaughterhouse Gulch right now because that's the area of the ditch that is going to construction in the summer. The Lee Gulch flume, or the, the flume that's in the area of Lee Gulch will come back in the future as far as a conversation once the Inglewood project moves to that portion in the future, which I know that design is being done right now, or being, yeah, being done right now. And so that could be a project next year or somewhere beyond.
But she does bring up an interesting point. If we could only save one, it would be nice to be able to compare the two. We'll only be asked to talk about this one for right now, and the next one potentially a year from now. It might make the most sense to make the decision at this point of which one of the two we're going to save.
It feels easier.
I think if we had more information, we could do that. I don't think we have enough information.
I know, which feels.
We have not been presented enough information, certainly.
That's a high-risk approach.
No, I, I agree, but I'm saying that like maybe we need that information.
Yeah, so the.
How do we get that information? If you already have it, why would, they already said they have it.
So the April twenty-second study session, that information was presented at the April twenty-second study session to City Council. We had a table in that presentation for both, uh, the flumes in the Lee Gulch area and the one that's in the Slaughterhouse Gulch area.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't know that we have that at our fingertips right here, but.
Well, and yeah, I don't think, I don't think we can go that far off the agenda, but I, I think it is an interesting option.
Yeah, but I can tell you, based on the structural assessment, the cost associated with it, the Lee Gulch, um, cost numbers are less than what you see on the screen for the, um, Slaughterhouse Gulch.
So to be clear, our involvement right now is.
Recommendation.
Advisory.
So there's, there's probably one of these choices that the city's more inclined towards with or without our inputs.
Do we know which one that is?
Um, so today, after the two study sessions we've gone to, the, the, the direction has, the authorization has been given for us to be able to have Inglewood with the IGA remove the flume structure with their.
Yep.
You want our blessing.
Not necessarily. So I think the idea though is.
Well, and I, well, I also, I'm not sure if that's true because there isn't another option that's been presented that hasn't been presented to council, which seems like it could be.
Maybe.
I think there's some flexibility in that option, right?
Yeah, it gives us a little more time.
Yep.
It, it isn't just gone. Cuz I, this sounds simple, but once it's gone, it's gone. We can't get it back.
Yeah, and this, the, the, this is a, when we talk about historical significance, you know, it's, it's tricky because it's owned by, it's no longer owned by the city of Littleton. And yet, you know, it, it, it ties back to city ditch, which was surveyed by Richard Little, which is, you know, foundational to our city.
Sorry, I'm spicy today.
What I get, I think.
Reminding everybody.
We want to do at least, at, at, at a minimum is get the paperwork that Inglewood needs to start construction, right? And I believe that's the temporary construction easement and the permitted easement, right? And then the IGA and the quit claim could come later. But not that much later.
In July?
What's that?
You don't need all four done in July?
We do not need all four done in July. We do need to make a decision cuz once they, once Inglewood gets done with their construction and water quits running in the flume at that time, we're gonna have to consider the quit claim deal. And, and likely the IGA at that point, which will probably be Novemberish this year, you think?
Well, construction will begin this summer, but it'll, the end date, you know, including restoration, receiving things like that is supposed to be, uh, March thirty-first of twenty twenty-six is the true end date in our contract.
Right, but the part of the concern with that would be if we are asked to take, take it down or a portion of it down, we would want to do that.
That would presumably be part of construction.
Yeah.
But you're estimating November is when they get to Slaughterhouse Gulch, no?
Well, that's right.
When the construction arrives in the park to cut the dogleg off.
So we.
Although, although they have more of the construction schedule.
Yeah, so we'll, uh, so the ditch is utilized from April through October every year. So sections of the existing city ditch are gonna need to continue operating until, through October thirty-first. But those areas where, like that, where we are cutting it off, we're gonna be able to begin that construction this summer. But where we're actually tying into the existing, existing city ditch or overlapping the existing city ditch with the new pipeline, those will have to occur in the winter.
So the, once the water is turned off at the end of October, that's, that's where the end of twenty-five into early twenty-six, that's the window for removing the flume.
They could decide, well, August will, you know.
We'll, we'll still be using the flume.
Yeah, the, the flume will still have water in it through the end of October.
You can't stop using the flume till October thirty-first?
Correct.
Cuz we're, we're gonna be.
The flume will be in use at least until October thirty-first.
Yes.
Cuz it said construction starts in summer of twenty-five. I was assuming that's the rush deadline.
Yeah, we had one of our slides, I can't remember where it was, but that, the removal of the flume would happen late in twenty-five or early in twenty-six. But that's, that's where the flume structure, if it's gonna be removed by Inglewood's project. Like, once the water is shut off, then they can remove it on November first if they wanted to, but it could be as late as March.
But the decision Littleton needs to make about what to do with the flume has to be done before the IGA is signed. Is that correct?
Yes.
And Inglewood's gonna be eager to get that signed faster than Littleton is.
Well, so the construction can start, you gotta correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that the construction can start without the IGA signed.
Right, I got that, I got that. But there's gonna be this pressure to get the IGA signed even before October thirty-first. So the fate of the flume can't be put off until October thirty-first. The fate of the flume can only be put off till the IGA needs to be signed.
Yes, if we want to have Inglewood help cover the costs to remove it.
And by help, cuz on the sheet it says minimal, does that mean zero?
Well, yeah, so it, yeah, yes.
Okay.
Minimal is, I mean, there might be, I did put zero there cuz you just never know, I suppose, but, um, minimal would be, it's pretty low cost to the city of Littleton.
Do we have a sense for the flexibility around minimal cost, of course, is what everybody has agreed to already as being a good option. But then trying to preserve or commemorate something here would have a cost until, do you have, do we have a sense for what that flexibility would look like beyond zero?
Um, so I think that's what, that's what the number, the other numbers are that are in the table there.
I mean, as far, yes, what's realistic?
Yes, what's realistic, so.
Like, what would the city actually, I mean, would be zero, but.
Listen, the public work staff are gonna make their recommendation, and preservation planning are gonna make theirs. So the city doesn't speak with one voice in terms of what they want to have happen. These folks are sort of in a creative conflict around what's the best for the city.
And I do think we can read between the lines a little bit that stabilize in place was added after.
Right, so the.
They said no, I agree.
City council kind of authorization is the having Inglewood take it down, remove a piece. They're bringing that extra two A, so that's why we're looking for this flexibility to understand, to provide a better recommendation from y'all this kind of time around. Um, because there's that new piece, we go off of that council, kind of what they tell us to do essentially. So that's, so it is hard to gauge, kind of, same thing I say to all of the applicants before they come to see you. I can say, I can give a yes recommendation ultimately, no clue what's gonna happen because y'all are the ones making that decision. So I think that's the pieces, we can't really give you a yes or a no. They were already kind of authorized cuz to at least, there's some conversation around preservation in the sense that they're at least so far have authorized this commemoration of a piece. Obviously, from a preservation standpoint, that wouldn't be y'all's recommendation, it's a preservation staff's recommendation. But that's kind of where they're at. They didn't have the stabilize in place piece yet cuz money is absolutely a concern. Um, some kind of that balance piece with it. Um, so we just don't, I think, know exactly how council is gonna go with this, so it would be new information at the fifteenth, which, um, is helpful cuz we can also provide information from y'all to go along with this like new kind of number. Or not new number, just more clearly presented number, I guess.
Yeah, so like I said, it's a number that they have seen.
Correct me on any of that.
Like I said, it's a number they have seen, and so they're aware of it, which I think is why we're actually having this conversation.
Yeah.
Well, we have influence over the council too in terms of a, a commission. If we, if we felt strongly that preservation was a priority here, basically what Amy is saying. That if, if not, and Paige said it too, if not this, then what do we preserve?
And we've already.
We can, we weigh in on that and say, we're your commission for historic preservation, this is high priority. And then council takes that under, under consideration.
And let's also not forget that we're losing Geneva Village too. Like, that's two big things in a short amount of time.
I would say a decision has not been made about Geneva Village. So it's not an absolute.
Recommendation.
Yes, so there's no absolute decision that's been made. I don't, not saying that that isn't a possibility, but just saying like, there is no absolute decision that's been made on that piece.
Okay.
Just pointing clear.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Just an observation and not a question. This is a very utilitarian, I think that might be the right word, structure, which, nice way of saying, taken out of context is just an ugly old tube. To take a piece of this and put it somewhere else and commemorate it is going to mean nothing. Its context comes from being in place with a section of that ditch on each end of it to demonstrate the use of this thing and its historical significance to the city of Littleton. It makes no sense to me personally to take a chunk of this and put it somewhere else, put it at my Bemis Library.
Or in the museum.
It's gonna mean nothing.
Comes a piece of equipment from the nineteen forties.
It becomes a trophy, basically.
It's gonna look like something that came off a cement truck.
You know?
Yeah. So that, two cents there, stabilize in place.
We are in study session, we can't make any official acts, we can't, can we?
No, you can make, I mean, you can say, like, you can say that your, what your recommendation is.
Yeah, but we can't, we, we're not doing anything officially tonight.
But the council wanted us to consider this.
Right, and to offer unofficial guidance to.
Yeah, and discuss it and they.
No, it's, I mean, it would be your official recommendation. That doesn't have to be done at like a, like a.
With a vote?
No, you can just, kind of, the consensus is that the recommendation is X.
Yeah, cool.
Is it too much to say that Historic Preservation Commission feels strongly that preservation of the flume is?
Of one of the flumes.
I think that's how we get ourselves in huge trouble.
Yeah, because, yeah.
We'll lose both if we try to play that.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
The discussion right now is Slaughterhouse Gulch.
Yeah.
Flume, so you can say that your recommendation would be.
And that we would like to be involved a little earlier when the Lee Gulch project happens.
Yeah, so we can make a better decision and not feel like our backs against the wall.
Yeah, but yes, I do think that that's accurate, Jason. Is there?
Is that the feel of the commission, commissioners?
Yeah, out of all the options.
We feel strongly, and it's a high priority to preserve the flume, is what I'm spitballing here.
In place.
In place, preserve, yeah.
I guess I'll just ask a clarifying question, so, um, the entire structure, not cutting off the ends to have better security or stabilization.
Without all the information, it feels, it feels stupid for us to be making, yeah.
Yeah.
So yes, at this moment.
The entire structure, okay.
Option two A, basically.
Or, or to see a drawing before we make our recommendation.
Yeah, cuz there could be other approaches to the security of that that may not result in the removing of pieces. That could be an option, but what are the other?
And.
But isn't option two, making the assumption that water's gonna continue to run through it?
No. Water is not running through.
So we were talking about recirculating giant pumps.
So option two would be with the water running through it.
Okay, but two A is just stabilize in place, it's not gonna have any water. Okay, but two A, just stabilize in place, it's not gonna have any water.
Yeah, so two, oh, is it two A that we just love that game plan?
That's sort of the difference between the two.
I think two A. But I am curious, has anybody talked to the shippo about what grant funding might be available?
Yeah, so.
Have they given us like a dollar amount or?
I reached out and so um the State Historical Fund, I asked, double checked, would this structure be eligible for the grant? The grant gives, for the large one, gives up to two hundred and fifty thousand um for preservation based projects. It does need to be designated. We are certified local government, which means our locally designated structures can qualify for this funding. There are other options, and I have, did not uh think about the stabilize in place, I can also double check on that. Cause there are smaller grants, up to about fifty thousand, because there's always a match involved. But the stabilized piece might actually be able to be granted as well. Um, I can double check on that if a mini kind of would allow for that. Um, so there is funds, it is relatively competitive. And so it's not a guarantee, but it would cover a large cost of the current estimated construction cost. So that is an option. Um, the city has received them in the past, so they are in good standing, so we, they tend to like to give money to people they know will do it correctly. So that's a good thing. Um, so that is, that's probably the primary option in terms of being able to fund this. I don't know if it would rise the level of like national grants, those are also contentious. So the, our best source would be the State Historical Fund, and there are a few options within that. There's also a planning grant that we can look at in terms of um spending a little bit of money to look more at the kind of preservation side of things with this. If if the, if it's chosen to be stabilized in place. So there's some options, but again, it's all, it's not a guarantee. But those are, those, I did check with them, and I didn't think about the stabilize in place piece, if we could do a smaller grant to say, hey, we just wanna buy ourselves some time to be able to do this further, or we see that we don't necessarily need to have it running, have warning rodder through it because of ongoing concerns about cost and maintenance, is it to keep it and then interpret it as is? I mean, the coolest would be the water, but kind of keeping that realistic.
But the water can't explain the half million dollar delta between two and two A. There's gotta be more.
It's because it's, I mean, it's the pumping structure, it's a, it's a whole.
Half million dollars?
Is, I mean, is that why?
Like I said, that option two doesn't even include the pumps.
Right.
Yeah.
That that is just the.
So what makes up the half million delta between two and two A?
Yeah, so there.
Let's just say wa- take water out of the equation. You you weren't assuming water and pumps and all that. What made up the half million dollar difference for you?
Yep, so it's removal of the corrosion, it's painting the entire structure.
So all that gets into preservation issues, right? So suddenly, it's not a preservation project anymore, it's, yes, no?
Which one? What do you mean?
I asked him to explain all the elements of two. The first thing he said is, get rid of corrosion, you know, all this repair work. Isn't that going to become an issue in terms of preservation work?
Not necessarily.
Well, not, unless, well, unless it's not.
Well, but it's complicated, right?
If it's not, doesn't.
Well, I mean, you have to do it sensitively, but it is also taking into account, um.
Why it's so expensive.
But they came, Ryan and his team came up with an estimate. Did did they use preservation principles in coming up with that estimate?
I don't believe so. I mean, the preservation principles I could see in this one, they would allow, likely allow new techniques to be able to preserve it and maintain it. Um, to prevent that corrosion, there are times when, um, if there's not a material to repair, replacement may not be the best, obviously, wouldn't make sense in this issue. And so what are the other options in terms of it? So it could be painting, it could not, I mean, I haven't seen exactly everything that would go into it.
So back to you, list the things.
I think I would say probably not, cause we, the, that cost does include replacing some of the sections of steel that are beyond repair. So there is, it's likely that option two, it might go beyond some of the things that would be allowed with regard to reservation, but that's definitely.
This is exactly what I'm getting at, and then the therefore is, two A, from a preservation standpoint, might actually be better for now than two. You shouldn't think of it as, ooh, if we had six hundred thousand dollars, we'd go with option two. No. Actually, for for the purposes of preservation and right now, Gail said, don't do anything. That's what she's requesting us to do, not do anything. So two A actually makes more sense.
And I would say, I will caveat this by saying, the replacement of a piece of that structure, if it is meant to be a kind of living example of how this could work and you could see it, grant funds would likely allow for that replacement. It's replacement in kind. Um, and so that is a potential, but if water is not necessarily running through it, it may not be as necessary. So there is, cause we look at it too, you look at sometimes replacing material, because it's either can't repair it, there's no other option, et cetera, so what are those? So it may be, but obviously, the best would be to be able to keep as much as possible that is original. So I will misspoke a little too later.
Yeah, they have a recommendation. You got it, right?
Kalina's ready to go.
I'm so ready. I'm done.
So I guess. I think it would be interesting for us to, while this is what's presented, with our group insight around what we could envision to properly preserve slash commemorate this particular item. Think beyond this, because frankly, it isn't beautiful. It's not like we're looking at a brick aqueduct in England here. It's, it's a thing that might have some sentimentality from the nineteen seventies. It's not even the original historical ditch that is that pivotal, very monumental shift in the way things were being developed in this area.
The forties.
No, it's not. The ditch is, the ditch is really cool. And so perhaps we we get creative about thinking less about the flume and maybe representing that via pictures or a website or something that you could see virtually.
Or plaque.
And focus a little bit more on what the the true historical piece is, which I think we we can all have an opinion about what that would look like. But I do feel like these are a a set of options, but perhaps limiting in the way that we're viewing what could actually be done. And then there'd be different costs too, if we thought outside of these options.
I agree, that's it, I agree, you can talk.
I'm sorry, that's it.
There's always been a flume there.
Correct.
Yeah.
And the flume probably has its, as it, based on age, does have its own, there's an allowance for that shift in, like, newer things that are part of a historic ditch, hundred fifty years old, flume eighty five, but with that eighty five year old piece, it's been there, it's working, it's kind of gained its own significance as part of this broad broader thing. Correct, and it's, yeah, it was a replacement, it's kind of part of the history of the ditch, is these, is this replacement of the flume.
That could be interesting to do that as more of a, like, a visual.
And one thing that we do need, and kind of this was mentioned, and kind of think about though is two is like, this could stay there, great. It also could not, but it could stay there, but if you don't interpret, if you don't provide some information about it, that also doesn't do a ton.
Right.
Because eventually, if you went and saw this, like, I am someone who has never been around this type of thing, I'm from the southeast, we have a decent amount of water, like, that wouldn't mean a ton to me. I could look at it and be like, that's a cool structure, but like, outside of that, I don't.
The bridge. Understand irrigation and.
Yeah.
Correct, and so there is a piece to where it's like, um, so that is a, something that we would have to think about. That's also something council is thinking about it probably in terms of cost as well. Like, so there are components that go into this um that would need to be kind of well thought out, which is why, to an extent, that pause, that kind of say, let's not do something right now, may be the best recommendation. Cause it could be that we just need time to further look into this from a preservation piece.
But we would love to talk about this before the due date, like, the month before the due date, so like, if council could at least be considerate in in keeping us in the loop and not just dropping it on us two weeks before decision time, that would be cool, just saying.
Agreed. So Sarah, Sarah, is it your responsibility to convey back to the council?
Tell them we're pissed about this timeframe.
The commission's. Is it, that comes to you, right? Not Public Works to you. So what I would say is, we are, we feel strongly that we need to be consulted earlier.
Yes, I can, I will. Um.
We are strongly opposed to option one.
And strongly opposed to option three D.
Strongly opposed.
But yeah, all three is.
Well, I mean, the threes.
Pretty much, we're sitting in the option two categories.
Yes.
With two A being our for now preference.
Right, okay.
Yeah. And we want more time next time.
And the next time you wanna commemorate something, give us a call.
And so, that piece of. In sixty days' notice, please.
That piece of the commemoration, that say that's how council continues their current authorization. Thoughts?
Sorry, what was the question?
The commemoration, is it, is it a museum, is it in place, is it?
Doesn't have our support.
So we may not have that option.
Yeah, we need more information.
I think commemoration is, I think it could be so many things. And like we were saying earlier, depending on where you're from and if you swam in the flume.
I did not.
Or whoever might have swam in the flume as a kiddo.
The ditch.
The ditch or the flume. Uh, you could have wildly different interpretation of what commemoration's usage could be. Cause if it is like creating a trophy, that's completely different than saying we commemorated in place and we've got some like descriptive items.
We could have a goldfish race.
That, I I feel like saying we are for or again, yay or nay, commemoration is is voting blind, or it's it's supporting or.
Yeah, we need a specific.
But if commemoration means move the flume somewhere else, it's to Ed's point about the flume outside the.
Well, interpretation can do, can help with that. So if it's at the museum.
No.
Then there are means to to provide that interpretation.
We don't like that idea.
Well, and the commission doesn't, we're not informed enough to give you feedback on commemoration.
Okay, do. Okay, so I guess my question here is then, if city council goes, we don't wanna do two A or two, do you even want, are you even saying recommending commemoration?
Do.
Cause I do think that that is a piece of preservation, like commemoration, keeping a piece in a museum and interpreting history is an aspect of preservation.
No, let it blow back, come on.
Because that'll be used to say that the commission endorsed commemoration.
Yeah, so no.
So you'd rather it be completely gone?
Yes.
On commemoration. We're not offering an opinion on commemoration.
Yeah.
So I guess maybe what they'll ask, on the commemoration piece of it, the intent is to take a piece of the flume structure, and then we would come back to you all at a later date to get your thoughts about how best to commemorate it.
I get it. The best way for it to exist is for it to still be standing and not be, yeah, no.
So I guess.
So, but wait, if they, if they opt to do that, as you just described, there'll be time to have that conversation later, Sarah. Why would we need to weigh in now on the details of commemoration?
Yeah.
I'm not saying the necessarily details, it was just getting a sense of what are you thinking in terms of that? Obviously, the recommendation is preservation. But the way you were starting to say, talk about it, I was worried that it was off the table completely. That's what I was really trying to clarify is like, obviously, it's.
I think you're hearing that correctly. It, as far as we're concerned, to the extent that we're being asked, we don't support commemoration. Is that, is that reflective of?
Well, you don't support commemoration if option two or two A are on the table.
I mean, if the choice is, just forget about the ditch, never happened, or putting something in the museum that's interpreted, obviously, we wanna remember the ditch.
Correct, and so the recommendation could be two, two A, a hundred percent, continuing to be involved, involved early. But if council decides not to go with that, you still want to be involved in whatever decision is made post this July fifteenth meeting, is that?
Yes, involvement, yes.
That's all you're asking, absolutely.
Yeah, ready for enforcing.
It sounded like you wanted more specifics on commemoration.
Well, it was more, it was just trying to fit, not necessarily, but like, there were some specifics in the sense of, do you, cause there, it's been thrown out at the library, putting it at the museum, keeping a piece almost as like art. And so if council is kind of already talked about these, is there any bit of like, yes, a more formal museum situation makes more sense, and your recommendation could just be that you don't have enough info yet, that's fine. That's what I was trying to get at, is like, the things that have been already thrown about, what are your thoughts? Sorry, I didn't, I was not clear on that.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, if if it turns into, we're gonna keep a piece, I think we want, we would wanna be involved at that time.
Gotcha.
But our strong decision is two or two A.
But we don't wanna come across like we're encouraging that.
Oh, no, 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 and that won't be, and that won't.
It needs to be really clear.
Be done that way.
Okay.
Cause we will, I will coordinate with these guys to provide that recommendation. I'm also gonna be at that meeting for another item, so I am also there to, as needed.
Okay.
So if council goes with option two A or option two, do you guys want us to bring it back?
Yes.
And then talk about how to commemorate it anyways.
Yes, yes, please, as soon as possible.
Do you anticipate, do you anticipate council making a formal decision?
Yes.
In July on, fill in the blank.
I don't know if they'll make a formal decision. They'll make a formal decision about um the easements that Inglewood needs to move forward. What will probably, we'll, we'll probably present this option two A for them to consider. And my guess is that they will ask us to come back to the H P C for more feedback, and then we'll probably bring it back to them for a more formal decision.
That'll be great.
That's what I'm guessing will happen.
Can it be structured in a way that when this item comes up on the council meeting, that Sarah is sitting with you? So that historic preservation is part of the context of this, rather than just Public Works and Inglewood standing there saying, well, we really want option one.
It probably makes sense to have Sarah. For the H P C than Public Works, right?
Are you doing that?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Okay, cool. Break.
Cause I am all about operation and maintenance, so.
Right, exactly. I mean, we shouldn't expect you to have to wear someone else's hat. Um, because you have your own hat and your own priorities, we have to respect that.
And so just to double check, I think I'm good, but I just wanna make sure.
Oh, my god.
We're right, we're, we're, shut it, guys.
Shut up.
It's me, it's mine, blame me, Kalina. Um, okay, so obviously, recommendation is two, two A, with two A being the primary recommendation, because it gives a bit of time to understand, is this the best path forward? Um, and then noting that consultation on projects like this would like to be done earlier, and then also the commemoration piece is, this is not what H P C wants, but if you do this, they do wanna be included in that kind of discussion piece. But again, reiterating, two A is really where you're.
I think Sarah, can I just hit on a nuance?
Yes.
So, two, I I think we, we as a commissioner are recommending two A, because it does give us time, not necessarily to decide if this is the best option, but it gives us time to consider any interpretation, any addition, whether or not to cut the ends off, gives us time to consider security, but not whether or not it's the right decision, we think it's the right decision. It gives us time to consider the details of that decision.
I have a feeling we'll be bringing it back to you, just for that.
And more nuanced, sorry, Kalina. We we are not advocating them appropriating a hundred and fifty K right now. So when it's presented as we believe in option two A, it's not, we need to spend a hundred and fifty K tomorrow. And that's important for them to know.
No, it's just.
We're actually recommending, do nothing, do nothing, just don't agree to option one.
Okay.
That's really all they have to do is, please don't agree to option one. And the rest, and because if they're sitting.
And the commemoration piece, the current authorization, which is to take a piece.
Grants may cover two A.
Right, but stabilize it.
It's only ten thousand dollars a year. It's not that expensive.
It isn't, you're right.
Manually.
We just wanna make it really easy for the council to follow our wishes.
There are likely could be a cost, when you're turning this into like a historic, like, so this is the minimal in terms of, like, to your point, Jason, the the operations and maintenance piece. So that, there is a increased cost of the ten thousand. It is likely worth it, I'm not saying that it is not worth it, I am.
But there are also grants.
But there is.
But also, we.
There's just too many variables to lock it down to one fifty, three, four hundred right now. We're really just saying, don't do option one, please, please, please.
These are just an order of magnitude costs, right?
Not sure. This has been great, guys.
Yeah, this is a fun one.
This is so fun.
Thank you for writing this with us.
Is the chair adjourning?
Uh, yeah, Paige, Paige and I speak telepathically, she's done. Well, do you need anything else from us before we adjourn? Okay. All right, I will close this study session of the Historic Preservation Commission at seven fifty six. Thank you.
See, I do, we communicate like this.